A meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at Boston dot com forward slash city dash council dash TV. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Also pursuant to Rule 42, I remind all in the chamber that no demonstration of approval or disapproval from members of the public will be permitted. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta Zapata, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Ushin, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Peppin, Counselor Santana, Counselor Weber, and Counselor Worrell.
Thank you. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. We am going to introduce this with clergy, but I wanted to say congratulations to all of my colleagues. I know that everyone has been working incredibly hard on behalf of the residents of this city. And yesterday was an important day. And I always say to everyone that my colleagues, even when we don't necessarily agree on the substance, we do agree on how much we care about the city and the future of this city. So I just want to say congratulations to all of my colleagues, and it's an honor to work with all of you and to lead this body. Thank you for clapping, although clapping does count as a demonstration of approval. So it is not allowed. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy, Father Federico Chinoka, Vice President of Mission and Ministry and Chaplain at Emmanuel College, who will be providing our invocation accompanied by the new Emmanuel College President, Beth Ross, invited by Counselor Durkin. After the invocation, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
It's always an honor to be with any member of the Colleges of the Fenway. Please come up to the dais. But Dr. Beth Ross and I have a special relationship. I actually got to represent the city of Boston onstage at her investiture ceremony. Got to hear how much people care about her leadership and how, over 20 years of service to her college, how much they care. She's literally had every single job in the book, and now is the president. So, you know, in a time when we need more qualified women than ever leading our spaces, I just am really, really honored all the time to get to work with you. So we are inviting Father Federico. We are so excited to have him here. I want to give the President of Emmanuel College, Dr. Beth Ross, the chance to introduce him.
Thank you very much, Counselor Durkin, and what a pleasure it is to be here, particularly after so much energy last evening. We appreciate your leadership. We're particularly grateful for Counselor Durkin's partnership, and I'm so pleased to ask Father Federico, our Vice President of Mission and Ministry, who's been here with the college for a couple of years now, and I work so closely with him, and he's such a vibrant member of our community and the Boston community at whole. So Father Federico Chinoka.
Thank you, and please excuse my accent. The ladies in my parish, they say it's charming, but they're in their 80s and 90s, so I don't Airports are the doors of this nation. While millions once arrived by boat, today many take their first steps on American soil through the gateways of our cities, our airports. When people arrive in Boston, one of the first voices they hear is that of Mayor Wu saying, "We're glad you're here." It's a message of welcome and belonging. It doesn't matter where you're coming from, what joys or sorrows, hopes or challenges you carry, whether from abroad or another American city, you are welcome. My name is Father Federico Chinoka, and as an immigrant myself, those simple words mean a great deal. When I came to Boston to begin my PhD, I discovered a city where possibilities are endless, where new beginnings are not only possible but encouraged, and where creativity opens doors to the unimaginable. For my 10th anniversary of priesthood, I even received the honor of a day with my name, thanks to Mayor Wu, which I must say made my grandmother cry. Walking through the streets of this beautiful city, one can meet world-renowned scientists, doctors, researchers, and scholars, people shaping global culture and making history. Many could have gone elsewhere, but they chose Boston. Why? Because there is something special here, the people who make this city what it is. And we at Emmanuel College strive to be part of this great endeavor. Today, we are proud to be an integral part of a 400-year-old city that never grows old. In fact, the energy of the new Boston, the innovation, the diversity, and the courage to imagine is very much a part of who we are. The spirit of possibility is also made real through your work, listening patiently to our city's residents, imagining solutions, and seeking agreement even when common ground feels elusive. Perhaps this is the heart of political life, building communion in the face of disagreement, forging unity where division threatens. If our leaders cannot walk together, how can their people? You carry much on your shoulders, but know this: Many are praying for you daily, I certainly am, and many are doing their part to build up this city we love. Let us pray. O God of new beginnings, as our leaders gather today, put out your spirit of unity upon them, grant them courage to walk together, to dream boldly, and to build wisely. Let them feel the quiet strength of their people, those who hope, who labor, who pray. May Boston continue to be a city of champions, where hearts are open and hands are ready to do good. At Emmanuel College, we offer our support. Inspired by St. Julie Billiard and the vision of the Sisters of Not Redundant Amur, we believe in the power of education to transform lives and uplift the common good. So we dedicate ourselves to forming leaders who not only possess superb intellectual and practical skills, but who also listen with compassion and who imagine solutions with creativity and care. Lord, bless the work before the sitting council today. Give them clarity of mind, strength of heart, and wisdom in decision-making. May their efforts reflect the hopes of the people they serve, and may the fruits of their labor bring justice, peace, and progress to our beloved city. Amen. On behalf of Emmanuel College and our President Beth Ross, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. A special thank you to City Councilor Sharon Durkin for the invitation, and thank you and congratulations to all of you who put their names in the ballot and took the risk to expose themselves and are serving our city every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Grazie. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, Counselor Durkin. Thank you, grazie, Father Federico, and thank you and welcome and congratulations again, President Ross. Thank you. We are now moving on to presentations. We have two presentations today, one by Counselor Peppin recognizing Health Care for All, and the other by Counselor Murphy recognizing Ayesha Miller. Counselor Peppin, you have the floor in five minutes.
Thank you. Please join me. This is your stage too. Good afternoon, everyone. Today, I am honored to present to the council Health Care for All as they celebrate their 40th anniversary. Health Care for All is the foremost organization in Massachusetts advocating for health equity and expanded coverage. Their stated vision for Massachusetts is a Massachusetts in which everyone has equitable, affordable, and comprehensive care that they need to be healthy. This is an impressive vision and one that I share. Many critics of expanding health care access at the state and federal levels reduce the important advocacy work that Health Care for All is as idealistic, but in times like this, when the federal government is thriving, is striving to reduce coverage and access, we ought to be striving for increased coverage and access. Health Care for All has demonstrated that people and groups can make positive change, create better health outcomes for our neighbors, and build toward this ideal world. Now more than ever, Health Care for All. And we can't say the words "Health Care for All" without honoring also the founding executive director, Robert Ristuccio, who has left such an impact in our community, was someone that advocated for everyone to have health insurance, access to health in general, and did such an amazing job that the model of Health Care for All in Massachusetts was used across the country. And I think now more than ever, we really have to stand with organizations and advocacy groups like Health Care for All because they are fighting the fight every single day. I was able to learn today that on a yearly basis, they take over 20,000 calls from all residents trying to help them get health insurance across our state. But without further ado, I want to allow the current executive director, Amy Rosenthal, to say a few words because they're the ones that are true in the real work. So Amy, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, and thank you for this incredible honor and for recognizing us, and thank you to all of you. I think that this really means a lot to us at Health Care for All because we work really hard, being very grounded in the community. And when I think about all of you in the Boston City Council, every time I think of a counselor, it's really about how connected you are with your neighborhoods, how connected you are with the people that you serve, and that's what we strive to do every single day when we're thinking about health care. And we do this work in a variety of ways. As you just heard, we take over 20,000 calls a year in five languages. Feel free to send us any calls that you have. But we also do this in partnership with community-based organizations, and they're really the heart of what we do. And I wanted to just take a second to not only acknowledge our amazing staff, but also the community-based groups based in Boston that we do work with because without them we would be not nearly as successful. So Acadon, Ahensia Alpha, Asian Women for Health, Boston Missionary Baptist Community Church, Brazilian Women's Group, Brazilian Workers Center, Center to Support Immigrant Organizing, Chinese Progressive Association, Immigrant Family Services Institute, La Alanzia Sispanya, Next Leadership Development, Ryan White Program, and the True Alliance Center. And these are all groups that mean so much to us and the work that we do. So we're pleased to be answering calls every day, helping people stay covered. We're in the community, running big campaigns to try to help people get health insurance and get the medical care that they need. And then we're working on policy work to make sure that people stay covered, and this is going to be a trying few years in the years ahead, but we stand with all of you and stand with the people that you represent and are eager to continue to partner with you all. So thank you for this recognition. It means so much. Our staff is really amazing, and we appreciate this recognition. So thank you.
And then very quickly, I just want to make sure that we also honor them officially with an official resolution on behalf of the Boston City Council. We had further resolved that the Boston City Council extends its gratitude to Health Care for All in recognition of over 40 years advocating for health justice in Massachusetts. Your work addressing health equity, increasing affordable coverage, and passing legislation on comprehensive care has saved countless lives across our state. Your service has been vital in making our city and state one of the healthiest in the country today and tomorrow. Congratulations. And may I invite my colleagues for a quick picture?
We can move on up. There we go. I didn't do the full suit. I just didn't feel like doing a suit. Yeah, I was, we had a call before this happened.
Oh, yeah, we'll make sure we say that.
That's a trick.
Henry, get out of the way.
We're happy you're here, but get out of the way.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you. 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 Welcome. We're welcome. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[1111.13]
And getting people on the right track. And she never, she never gave up on people, even when people were really down on their luck. Ayesha was always there giving people another chance. So I always respected it and admired her for that and proud to call her a friend and colleague. Thank you.
A few words? Um. Ho heave ho in a hearty yell, they swung a beam and the sidewalk fell. They asked these people, are these men skilled and women skilled? The ones you would have to build? The foreman laughter went through the crowd and said, ha ha, oh no, indeed. Just common labor is all that I need. What can I build in a day or two? I can wreck in minutes. As the woman went on her way, she thought to herself, which role am I trying to play? Am I a builder who builds with care, measuring life by every rule and square? Or am I a wrecker who walks the town, content with tearing everything down? I want to thank Councilor Murphy, Councilor Flynn, for acknowledging me in this way to Madam President and to all of you here today in this chamber. I don't think I've ever been in the chamber this way to be honored. I'm always sitting in the audience, taking notes or what have you. But I want to say congratulations to all of you. I'm a Matta Pan girl through and through. And everyone that knows me knows that I've read Matta Pan very hard. And I try to make sure that people look, when they're looking to me for help, I want to be able to pick up my phone and say, sure, of course, what can I do? Government is by the people for the people. And when your heart is not in it anymore, then it's ultimately time for you to move on. I want to thank one of my mentors who's in the audience, Chief Dion Irish. And Keith Williams, thank you for coming down and being here with me today. John and I go way, way back. And so I just want to say to you, you were always, you're always a good friend and always been there, and I appreciate you very much. Councilor Mejia, you and I go way back too. I mean, you know, maybe fifty pounds way back too. And we were jogging through the, through the streets and whatnot. So I just want to say thank you and thank you all for this recognition. And to my City Councilor, Brian Worrell, congratulations, sir. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. We're going to take a photo. That's for you. Congratulations.
Thank you. This is yours. Who is Central Staff? Megan? Megan? I think this might be for someone in Central Staff. It was up, it was up here.
Congratulations again to Matta Pan's own Dr. Ayesha Miller. Okay, Mr. Clerk, could you please update the attendance record, uh, record to reflect that Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Mejia, and Weber?
Yes.
Are now present and with us?
Yep.
All right, okay. Thank you. We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of October 29, 2026. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the October 29th meeting are approved. We are, we are now on to communications from her honor, the mayor. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1951?
Docket number 1951, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $100,000 in form of a grant for the Community Safety Initiative awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund the city of Boston's comprehensive strategy aimed at reducing gun, gang, and youth violence in the city.
Thank you. Docket number 1951 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1952?
Docket number 1952, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $25,000 in form of a grant from the Harvard Public Service Fellow Grant, awarded by the Harvard Center for Public Service and Engagement, to be administered by the mayor's office. The grant will fund the Harvard Public Service Fellow position in the mayor's office supporting initiatives owned by the partnership team.
Thank you. Uh, this docket is half of, the $25,000 is half of the amount paid to the fellow and the city pays the other half. It is for $25,000 from the Harvard Public Service Fellow, uh, from the Harvard Center of Public Service and Engagement. I seek suspension and passage of this docket, docket number 1952. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read, uh, okay, we are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, can you please read dockets number 1953 to 1957?
Docket number 1953, notice received for the mayor, the appointment of Bethany Moffey as a member of the Boston School Committee Nominating Panel for a term expiring on November 3rd, 2027. Docket number 1954, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor and act, papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 1st, 2025. Docket number 1955, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor and papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 22nd, 2025. Docket number 1956, communication received from the Commemoration Commission of the report entitled Commemoration Commission Progress Report, July 20, 2025. And docket number 1957, communication from Council Flynn regarding a tax amendment to the Boston zoning code and community process.
Thank you. Although we do not normally speak on communications, Council Flynn, you'd like to speak on this communication?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
One moment, your light is not yet on. Madam Clerk, um, can you please put two minutes on? Council Flynn, you have the floor in two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wrote another letter to Chief Shen and Mayor Wu regarding my proposed tax amendment to the Boston zoning code. Again, this was related to having a thorough community process for all establishments, including adult entertainment in the area of Chinatown, downtown Boston, and the Bay Village. My proposal would essentially change adult entertainment from an allowed use to a conditional use and make it a public process. It's critical that the people of Chinatown and communities of color are treated with respect, that they receive a thorough community process and a voice in what takes place in their community. I again am respectfully asking the Planning Department for their help and expertise. Since we had a case in June that required no community process, I spoke with concerned residents in Chinatown, especially over the last several weeks. They expressed serious concerns regarding a lack of community process for locating adult entertainment in the neighborhood. I talked at length to Ruth Moy, who's a friend of mine, a dedicated community activist. She is putting pressure on all of us, rightfully so, to support the residents of Chinatown. I wanted to highlight to my colleagues and those watching at home, a recent report in the Boston Globe where prominent leaders from the Chinese Progressive Association expressed their concern on the respect for the community process as well. In my opinion, those that know the history of Boston and how hard Chinatown has fought, they know that this tax amendment should have been addressed decades ago. With ongoing concerns in downtown Bay Village, Chinatown regarding public process, public safety, quality of life for neighborhoods and residents, it's critical that all establishments go through a full community process for zoning moving forward. I believe that my constituents in Chinatown, downtown Boston, and the Bay Village deserve a voice in what takes, takes place in their community. It's about respect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dockets number 1953 to 1957 will be placed on file. We are now on to reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1434?
Docket number 1434, the Committee on Government Operations, to which it was referred on August 6, 2025. Docket number 1434, ordinance codifying the Office of Youth Engagement and Advancement. Submit's a report recommending that this matter ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the committee, uh, the chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Council Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This ordinance was originally sponsored by Councilors Henry Santana, John Fitzgerald, and Benjamin Weber, and look forward to passing the mic over to them so they can talk about all the incredible work that they've done leading up to this point. This is an ordinance that would codify the Office of Youth Engagement and Advancement, otherwise known as OYA, in the city of Boston, to take effect immediately upon passage and approval by the mayor. We held a hearing on Monday, October 27th, 2025, to discuss this docket. The committee heard testimony from panelists, which included administrative representatives, including Jose Masso, Chief of Health and Human Services, and Pedro Cruz, who's the executive director of OYA, as well as community leaders, Michael Downing from Career Pathways Coach, who is a Career Pathways Coach at Youth Guided Boston, Camila Rojas Pinero, providing testimony on behalf of Beat the Odds, and Caroline Foscato, providing testimony on behalf of the Soccer Unity Project. The administration testified that OYA was created in 2022 as an effort to unify and expand the city's engagement of youth, residents aged 14 to 25, through programs such as the Mayor's Youth Council, Youth Lead the Change, Youth Summit, Youth Line, Boston After Dark, and Youth Speaks Boston. It was explained that the office employs 11 staff, coordinates a network of more than 1,900 youth-serving professionals, and provides professional development and partnership support across agencies. The administration's testimony emphasized that codifying the office would ensure continuity beyond any single administration and reaffirming Boston's long-term commitment to youth leadership, safety, and opportunity. During the hearing, questions centered on how the office would ensure equitable service delivery across neighborhoods and age groups, and how the office operates under its current budget. The administration stated that while programming effectively reaches younger participants, a priority moving forward is to expand offerings to residents 19 through 25, who often need continued mentorship, career development, and civic engagement opportunities beyond high school. In response to concerns raised about limited access to programming in neighborhoods like Alston, Brighton, I want to thank my council colleague from District 9 for raising that issue. The administration described ongoing partnerships with the BCYF, the YMCA, and West End House to expand services, particularly through Boston After Dark initiative. With respect to questions about the office budget, the administration explained that the office's operating budget has been adequate to sustain staffing and program operations and is supplemented through external partnerships and grants, um, and grant funding that allow the office to expand its reach. There's a summary of amendments to the original docket that was filed, with a significant portion of changes happening under powers and duties. We learned from, um, the incredible executive director, Pedro Cruz, about how, just how much this office has expanded under his leadership over the last two years. And we had gotten into specificity about how, um, or which programs that they do currently or administer currently. And we did not want to get specific in the event that one program is, um, is evolving or will evolve, or the ability for them to expand, because they have expanded so much in the past two years. So we did a bulk of the changes in that section. But ultimately, the, uh, the mission remains the same, which is to codify this office in law, so that, uh, the priority does not change, um, during different administrations. And so as the chair of the Committee on Government Operations, at my time, my recommendation to the full council is that this matter ought to pass in a new draft, and would love to pass it over to the lead sponsor, Councilor-at-Large Henry Santana. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and, um, really want to thank, um, the chair, Council Coletta Zapata, um, for your leadership, um, in bringing this forward. Since OYA was established two years ago, it's been a pivotal in addressing the needs of our youth. OYA's commitment to uplifting Boston's youth, engaging them in citywide policy issues, and connecting them with opportunities and resources has been invaluable in ensuring that Boston is a city welcoming for all. The committee's report further shows that codifying OYA is necessary to ensure that our youth have long-term access to important resources. OYA is already a part of our city's fabric, and it's important we make it a part of the city's code as well. Codifying OYA is an essential and visionary step in reaffirming Boston's unwavering commitment to supporting all of its, um, youth. I want to sincerely thank, um, Santana's Youth Force, um, my, my citywide youth council, for their remarkable dedication, passion, and leadership in drafting this ordinance, as well for their courage in testifying at the hearing. Their voices embody the spirit of inclusion and community that we must prioritize. I am proud to support this ordinance and strongly encourage my colleagues to do the same, as we work together to build a more inclusive, equitable, and vibrant Boston for everyone and all of our youth. And also really want to thank my co-sponsors for their leadership in this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Council Weber, you have the floor.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, uh, Madam President. I just want to, uh, thank Council Santana and Council Fitzgerald for, for allowing me to join this as a, as a third. You know, I think that, uh, you know, this is a, this is a wonderful thing, support our kids, um, you know, in, in District 6. You know, we have whole groups of kids who are left without, uh, you know, mentors and, and full-time kind of programming and people who are looking after them. So codifying this office will help, uh, support kids of all across the city. So again, thank you to Council Santana for pushing this, uh, and I hope we pass it today. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Gerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I think one cool thing at that hearing we all learned, and I've said this before, is how we realized, uh, each of us that were there, how we were all engaged in our youth, uh, whether it was through Red Shirts Program, or myself was on the Mayor's Youth Council, and now on the City Council. It's because we're engaged in our youth that we are engaged in our adult life, and we know how important that is, and we wish more people would be more engaged in their political adult life. But I just think it, it just goes to show how important this is, the programs they have, and how it reaches and molds our next leaders of the city, uh, in years to come. So, uh, much appreciated and thank you to Pedro and Lindsay for all the work that they do.
Okay, is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Counselors, uh, Councilor Coletta Zapata, the chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1434 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 1434, Councilor Braden.
Yes.
Councilor Braden, yes. Council Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Council Coletta Zapata, yes. Council Durkin. Council Durkin, yes. Council Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Louzien.
Yes.
Council Louzien, yes. Council Mejia. Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Peppin.
Yes.
Council Peppin, yes. Council Santana.
Yes.
Council Santana, yes. Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Weber, yes. And Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Docket number 1434 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 1434 has passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1833?
Docket number 1833, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on October 22nd, 2025. Docket number 1833, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $99,476 in the form of a grant from the Pipeline Emergency Response Grant, awarded by the United States Department of Transportation, to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund training for emergency responders in high-consequence areas to protect people, property, and the environment from accidents involving gas or hazardous liquid pipelines. Submit's a report recommending that the order ought to pass.
Uh, the chair recognizes, uh, Council Santana, the chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Council Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a public hearing on Fire Department Grants on April 25, 2025. We were joined by the commissioner and other stakeholders for a productive and insightful discussion about the grants anticipated, um, to be administered by the Fire Department. The committee was, um, has also received written testimony from the administration providing detailed information about the specific program that this grant, docket number 1833, would fund. As the clerk shared, this docket is a message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the United States Department of Transportation's Pipeline Emergency Response, um, grant to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant is the amount of, um, $99,476. The Pipeline Emergency Response Grant would fund training for emergency responders in high-consequence areas to protect people, property, and the environment from the accidents involving gas or hazardous liquid pipelines. This funding would enhance the Fire Department's emergency response, um, capabilities for a high-pressure natural gas transmission pipeline in West Roxbury. In light of the discussion, um, during the April hearing, and given the information provided by the administration, as chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, my recommendation to the full council will be that this ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Santana. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Council Santana, the chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1833. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1833 has passed. Um, we do not have matters in question for possible action, therefore, we are on to motions, orders, and resolutions. A reminder to my colleagues pursuant to Rule 39, remarks by counselors at the time of petition, order or resolution has been admitted and assigned to committee. For review shall be up to three minutes for the sponsor and two minutes for any counselor or co, or co-sponsor, um, as the appropriate time for questioning and debate is at public hearings and working sessions. The chair recognizes Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, before you have the floor, the clerk has to read the docket. So, Mr. Clerk, could you please read the docket, and then, and then Council Flynn will have the floor.
Docket number 1958, Council Flynn offered the following. Order for a hearing on the establishment of a Committee on Civility in the city of Boston.
Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. In recent years, intense partisan ident, identity has been on the rise with people shifting to further ends of the political spectrum. We have been left in a place where there is a large volume of issues for people to disagree with. According to polling, a record 80% of the U.S. adults said that Americans were greatly divided on the important issue that are facing the country. With so many in our society getting the majority of their news and information from social media, um, we're looking for ways to, um, bring people together. As we know, social media can bring out terrible arguments with people, uh, disagreements across potty lines, oftentimes feeling like personal attacks. Escalating polarization and tension, it is important that our government leaders and elected officials practice civility. National, state, local government bodies, including the city council, should serve as role models for civil discourse, refraining from disrespect, personal offenses, and remain professional, all while leaving room for disagreement and the spirit of democracy. Cities across the country have taken action to foster a welcoming environment for government and residents alike to engage in healthy dialogue. For example, the Montana League of Cities, a nonpartisan association, painted a blueprint of how leaders can encourage civility. In terms of past examples of officials, official committees and commissions focusing on civility, the city of Nashville has an ad hoc civility committee, which held a hearing to discuss a proposed council civility code. The Illinois Supreme Court has a dedicated commission on professionalism, which maintains its focus on promoting civility. The National League of Cities, which I have worked closely with as the former city council president, it is, is an organization comprised of city and towns, elected officials across the country. They stated in a 2024 article that city government should be mediators in the community by working strategically with community groups, neighborhood organizations, to facilitate difficult conversations. This week, I participated in a forum with the National League of City, National League of Cities to discuss how city leaders can improve civility in city government. It is beyond dispute, dispute that the worsening conditions, um, that we have witnessed at the national level have now trickled down to state and local. To combat this, in my opinion, it would be beneficial to look into how the city of Boston can work on its own issues of, um, civility-related issues, so that we can serve as better role models for public discourse and lessen the effects of political tensions, both locally and nationally. This hearing will be an opportunity to learn from legal experts, nonprofits, residents, on how this committee will serve an example of strong leadership and fellowship. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Please add Councilor Worrell. This docket, doc, oh, and Councilor Murphy and Councilor Mejia. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 1959?
Docket number 1959, Council Worrell offered the following. Order for a hearing to allow for monthly property tax payments for residents.
Council Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Today's hearing was by the Mass Senior Action Council, um, and I'm grateful for their partnership on this idea, which is a voluntary monthly property tax payment option for Boston homeowners. Under quarterly billing, January's rate change can push a single bill up by thousands of dollars with only 30 days to pay. Homeowners with mortgages end up seeing their car spread out monthly because of escrow payments. Many seniors don't. They paid off their homes, and while house-rich, they are cash tight and are forced to pull together thousands in a short period of time. Since FY19, residential taxes have risen significantly, at least 7% a year, to that third-quarter bill keeps hitting hardest. For residents on fixed incomes, that's just not a budget headache, it's a housing stability risk. Like New York and Milwaukee, we can explore monthly installments with autopay. Affordability isn't only about building new housing, it's also about making sure people can stay in their homes. A voluntary monthly plan with autopay and accessible enrollment is a practical, proven step to help seniors and longtime homeowners who don't have escrow, um, be able to budget, um, appropriately. I look forward to working with my colleagues in the Mass Action Senior Council on this idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Flynn, please add the chair. This docket, docket number 1959, will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 1960?
Docket number 1960, Council Flynn offered the following. Resolution urging the city of Boston to certify with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as FEMA, for the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating, Ranking System.
The chair recognizes Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Boston has a long, rich history with its ports dating back to its founding in 1630. Today, our local economy still relies on ports, including in Charleston, South Boston, for trade and tourism. For many, waterfront neighborhoods are an attractive place to live for recreational activities, higher property values and a sense of community. However, due to sea level rise and heavy participation as a result of climate change, the risk of flooding in these neighborhoods becomes a higher risk every year. It's critical that residents have affordable, dependable access to flood insurance in the event that they get damage to their homes. I was talking with residents of Fort Point about this recently. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, National Flood Insurance Program, provides flood insurance to property owners, renters, businesses. Homeowners with flood insurance policies cover both buildings and belongings. Building policies cover flood damage up to $2,500, and content policies up to $100,000. Renters' flood insurance policies protect belongings with the home, covering up to $100,000 of damage. Commercial flood insurance protects the buildings and equipment used for businesses, covering up to $500,000. Residents and businesses in Massachusetts with policies through NFIP have received discounts up to 20%. That is significant. In order to qualify and get a discount on flood insurance, cities must receive a certification known as Community Rating System, CRS, from FEMA. The city of Boston has not yet applied to receive this certification, leaving residents to pay thousands of dollars every year. Through the application process, to be approved by FEMA, it is lengthy and requires considerable administrative review. But I do think it's worthwhile for the city of Boston to receive its certification in this time of rising cost of, of residents, um, living across the city, especially in flood-impacted neighborhoods. And that's having a big impact in my neighborhood, um, in South Boston, the South Boston waterfront, Fort Point, other neighborhoods across Boston. This is a common sense approach, it's not controversial. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I'll be adding my, my name, and just want to thank my colleague for bringing this, um, forward.
Building policies cover flood damage up to $2,500, and content policies up to $100,000. Renters' flood insurance policies protect belongings with the home covering up to $100,000 of damage. Commercial flood insurance protects the buildings and equipment used for businesses, covering up to $500,000. Residents and businesses in Massachusetts with policies through NFIP have received discounts up to twenty percent. That is significant. In order to qualify and get a discount on flood insurance, cities must receive a certification known as Community Rating System, CRS, from FEMA. The City of Boston has not yet applied to receive this certification, leaving residents to pay thousands of dollars every year. Through the application process, to be approved by FEMA, it is lengthy and requires considerable administrative review. But I do think it's worthwhile for the City of Boston to receive its certification in this time of rising cost of residents living across the city, especially in flood-impacted neighborhoods. And that's having a big impact in my neighborhood, in South Boston, the South Boston waterfront, Fort Point, other neighborhoods across Boston. This is a common-sense approach. It's not controversial. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I'll be adding my name, and just want to thank my colleague for bringing this forward. I do want to provide some additional context to what my district colleague has mentioned. So this came to our attention in 2023 in working in partnership with Chris Osgood and now Chief Brian Swett, and we were trying to understand and grapple with this long-term problem of increased insurance rates due to the increased risk of coastal flooding and storm surge. And so we learned at that time that there is a lot of administrative work that needs to happen and a lot of criteria in administrating this program effectively and within compliance so that we don't lose accreditation, or certification, rather, that's a better word, certification. And we had to build out a lot of internal infrastructure and systems in order to do it effectively. And so in order to join the CRS, it requires a lot of components, which means the documentation of elevation certificates in every new building and substantial improvement in the regulatory floodplain. I had a fellow from Northeastern. She was amazing, even trying to navigate different maps and trying to understand where the floodplain is. It takes a lot of work and a full-time person doing it. We also needed to update floodplain management practices, among other items. And so because of the extent of this work, cities of similar sizes and age as Boston haven't been able to effectively be a part of this program. And so that's, you know, not an excuse. We are working towards it. There has been a demonstration with this administration, and I do have to give kudos to them for at least prioritizing this. A former administration back in 2016 had promised that we would be a part of this program. And by 2021, due to COVID and other various issues or reasonings, it just did not happen. But there has been some sort of movement, and I do give credit again to the Office of Climate Resilience, where we now hired the first floodplain administrator in implementing new practices within that department, as well as in ISD and other departments. And so we do anticipate joining in 2026, although, of course, with the government shutdown, there's always a local impact. The application that was submitted to them recently has not been reviewed. And so as the government shutdown is happening, we want to make sure that we are continuing the work that is taking place. But I will be adding my name and thank my colleague for bringing it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the Chair. Counsel Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 1960. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has been adopted. Okay. Does anyone want to add their name or put forward a motion to reconsider on a docket when they were outside of chambers? No? Okay. We are now on to green sheets. Is anyone looking to pull anything from the green sheets? We are now moving on to late files. I've been informed by the clerk that there is one late, one late-file personnel matter. We will take a vote to add that late-file personnel matter on to the record. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The late-file personnel order has been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, could you please read it into the record? And just so that I'm clear, there were no other separate personnel orders, right? I didn't skip. Okay. Great. Could you please read the personnel order into the record?
Personnel order, Counsel Louzien for Counsel Mejia.
We will now take a vote on this late-file personnel order. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember, these are for any upcoming dates and events. Does any, do any of my colleagues have any announcements that they would like to make? The Chair recognizes Counsel Pepe. You have the floor.
I apologize.
You don't have to apologize. You have the floor.
So this weekend is Veterans Day, and we're, not this week, but we're celebrating Veterans Day. And for the first time in a long time, I'm doing a dinner for veterans in Hyde Park at the Fog Post on Sunday night at 6:00 p.m. So it's just a way to honor our veterans. We have a lot of veterans in District Five, and we just, we don't do as many Veterans Day activities there, so I'm trying to bring that back to the district. So all of you are invited. It's after the Patriots game, so you're not going to miss the game, but I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
I do just want to rise and thank our veteran on the council, Counsel Flynn, my son, and everyone else in the City of Boston, our veterans, as we look forward to Veterans Day. So thank you for honoring our veterans in Hyde Park and across the city. And I know I'll be joining many of you maybe at the parade this weekend, and just want to thank Commissioner Santiago and his small but mighty department who support and advocate, especially during the shutdown, making sure that our veterans are getting the services they need. So thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. And Counsel Flynn, thank you for your service as we are about to acknowledge and honor Veterans Day. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank my colleagues in the City Council for supporting our veterans and military families. I had a conversation with John Fitzgerald, and he proposed having a letter, which I agree with having a letter, that would go to congressional members about the City Council taking a proactive role in ensuring veterans' voices are heard in Washington. So I'm working with John on that letter, and I do hope to get it done and bring it down to D.C. on behalf of the City Council. So I want to say thank you to Counsel Fitzgerald for taking the lead on that, for working with me. Like other colleagues have mentioned, Commissioner Santiago has done an excellent job. One issue that he particularly works well on, that's been under attack, I believe, and I've worked with him on it, is the discharge under other-than-honorable conditions for gay and lesbian veterans, military service members, and they don't receive the same level of benefits if they weren't gay or lesbian, LGBTQ. But this is an issue I'm going to continue to work with Counsel, with Commissioner Santiago on, and I'll, will probably even put it in that letter that myself and Counsel Fitzgerald are working on. So just wanted to keep everyone posted. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, just want to just thank Counsel Flynn for his service and also Shane as well for his service. Also, just want to mention JASON's Sensory Day, which is a free, inclusive day of sensory-friendly fun, which is going to be happening on November eighth at the Thelma Burns Building from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Just want to shout out all the organizers who have made this happen. And also, State Representative Worrell and myself are now on our Fourth Annual Turkey Drive, which is happening on November fifteenth. Anyone who's looking to volunteer, please reach out to us. It is something that we do across three or four neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have an announcement that they would like to make? Okay. We are now moving on to memorials. Would anyone like to adjourn today's meeting on behalf of someone who has passed? Now is the time. I'd like to adjourn today's meeting on behalf of the former executive, well, he was the Executive Director of Harvard's Institute of Politics and the first black man to serve as mayor in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Seti Warren, who is known and beloved by so many here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I just, my heart breaks for him and his family, and so I would just want to extend my condolences to his wife and his kids and to all who knew and loved Seti Warren. And I'd also like to end today's meeting uplifting the name of a South End resident who recently passed away due to a tragic car accident, Michael Tavilla, who was a community leader and recently working in, at Northeastern University and has been a leading voice here in our city. So just want to also extend my condolences to his family on his passing. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Thomas Lally. He's a longtime resident of Alston. He passed away this week. He is, he graduated from St. Anthony's, a true Alston boy. Boston Technical High School, and after serving the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, he entered the family business as a bricklayer while pursuing an engineering degree at Northeastern University. He was employed as a civil engineer in the construction of Boston's Prudential Center and Smith College in Northampton, and he subsequently became a teacher and taught at Boston Public Schools for over twenty-five years. He's an active member of St. Anthony's Parish and Executive Board Member of the Alston Civic Association, and we will miss him. He was always a very, very regular tender at the Boston Civic Association, and we extend our condolences to his family. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Would anyone else like to uplift a name? Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. On behalf of Counsel Braden, Thomas M. Lally. On behalf of myself, Michael Tavilla. On behalf of the Boston City Council, Seti Warren, former Newton Mayor and Executive Director of Harvard University's Institute of Politics. On behalf of the City Council, former Vice President Cheney. A moment of silence. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. Happy Veterans Day, everyone. The council is scheduled to meet again not next week, but the week thereafter, on Wednesday, November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, at twelve noon. Thank you to my colleagues, to the central staff, to the clerk and the clerk's office, and to the council stenographer. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye. The council is adjourned.[1766.86][1766.86]